He's just saying this is what.
Can you call me in third?
Daniel, want to read the conflict of interest definitions?
Certainly. With the conflict of interest specifically the policy under the Minnesota statute sixteen B point nine seven subdivision four parent A period one provides that commissioner of administration shall quote-unquote create the general grant management policies and procedures that are applicable to all executive agency. And specifically if you remember that the conflicts of interest that we're talking about is subject four of them. An actual conflict of interest and the actual conflict of interest occurs when that decision or actions would compromise the duty to a party without taking immediate appropriate action to eliminate that conflict. The potential conflict of interest is the second. That potential conflict of interest may exist if a grant reviewer has a relationship affiliation or other interests that would create an inappropriate influence. If the person is called on to make a decision or recommendation that would affect one or more of those relationships affiliations or interests. Number three is the perceived conflict of interest. Again, the perceived conflict of interest is in any situation in which a reasonable third party would conclude that conflicting duties or liabilities exist. And the fourth, the individual conflict of interest. Again, that's a conflict of interest that may benefit an individual employee or grant reviewer. Situation in which a state employee or grant reviewers judgment, actions, or non-action could be interpreted to be influenced by something that would benefit them directly or through indirect graying to a friend, relative acquaintance, or business organization where they are involved.
So the city council has heard the definitions of the conflict of interest as described within the statutes relative to the small cities development program grant application. I invite you now to consider reading the motion moving forward to sign this.
Motion to sign conflict of interest disclosure forms relative to the two thousand twenty SCDP grant application.
Motion's been made. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll do the next, the next two there too.
Chris, do you want us to speak regarding the citizen participation plan?
Sure. And do you open the public hearing?
Yep, after that.
Okay.
Yep, thank you.
So I think the small cities development program grant application requires that you have a citizen participation plan. So the documentation from DED is in front of you. So if you go ahead and just approve that plan, which is basically to have a public hearing to hear from the public about the small cities development program that you would put in your city.
Yep.
I'll motion to approve the citizen participation plan pursuant to the Housing and Community Development Act of nineteen seventy-four.
We have a motion.
I second it.
We have a motion on the second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to open the public hearing on the two thousand twenty small cities development program grant application at five thirty-three P M. I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Open the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
So as part of the public hearing, I'd like to just give the public some information about the small cities development program. The city is applying for funds from DED, the Department of Economic and or Employment and Economic Development. And this grant is for two things. It's for, it's to benefit citizens that are low to moderate income and to address some slum and blight. So the low to moderate income persons will be benefited through a owner occupied rehab program, which is helping folks with housing needs within a target area. And we have the target area set and there's, I have some maps that the city council will, has. The area right now is, is to the east of Main Street, about out to the hospital north to, I don't have a map with the road names. But that will be all outlined in the application. So it's basically the whole residential area on that side of, of Main Street. And we are looking to rehab eighteen units. We have fifty-one interested households in that area. We had to pick the target area based on the, the area where we had the most interest. And the DED requires that we have a target area since you're a population of over a thousand people. And so I actually started with the pre-application a much larger target area and they, they required us to, to, to make that a smaller target area for the purposes of this grant application. It makes you more, more competitive. And I think what they're trying to do is have the target area to really get their funds into an area and, and make it go as far as possible in, in one smaller area so that the impact can look higher. So that's what we're doing with owner occupied. We're also asking for some commercial rehab funds. And we're asking to do five units. We got intent to participates and interest forms from, actually eleven now. I just got the, the laundromat to sign on. He signed, he came in today, I think it was. That target area is required by DED to be the downtown area. And so that's, that's where our target area is. We still have to have it the smallest amount of, of blocks possible. But I do have a couple extra maps of that if anybody in the public is interested in seeing that target area. Raise your hand. The overall grant we'll be, we'll be asking for, right now at this time, we'll be asking for seven hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, five hundred. I do have some, I printed off some budget pages. So for each unit for owner occupied, you would get for eighteen units, we're asking for twenty-five thousand dollars per unit. Depending on the income level, that person may or may not have to, to add match to that. They can maybe just use the whole twenty-five thousand if they're very low income. If they're just low income, then they will have to, they will be required to put in a, a match. But the H R A, Swift County H R A will be doing the field administration and they're very good at finding, helping folks find matching dollars for that. The admin for each of those units is thirty-seven fifty per unit. The, the admin goes towards both the general admin, which will be done by our office. And then for the field admin will be done by the Swift County H R A for the owner occupied and for the commercial units will be done by Prairie Five. For commercial rehab, we're asking for forty thousand dollars per unit for those five units and the admin for that is six thousand. The commercial rehab folks would get thirty-five thousand of that would be a, a grant. It's a forgivable loan, so you get one-seventh of it forgiven every year for seven years. And then five thousand of that would be a one percent loan paid back to the city for them to then use to, to do similar activities. We do suggest, right now the city is not, DED is able to fund all of the administrative costs through this grant. But we do recommend that the city put, put aside or just earmark, you know, five to ten thousand dollars in a contingency fund in the event if, if any of the projects use less than their full of mount, you can actually go beyond your goals to, to do more projects. But then there's a little bit more in admin costs. And so it's just, it's a recommendation that the city just earmark that. The schedule is that the full application is due February twenty-eighth. We'll hear back from DED in May, more likely June. Hopefully we're successful and then we can start on environmental review, the contracts and the policies that's done over the next two, three months. Small cities money could be available as early as October twenty twenty. That would be maybe pushing it. But depending on the urgency, we could try to get things going fast. And then the city has three years to use the funding. Staff has, has, that will be helping the city with this project. I mean, the city's had small cities grants before, which is all, I think, one of the reasons we got such a great amount of interest right away. And R D C has been doing grants administration for a long time. And both the H R A and Prairie Five have been administering these projects. We have to be compliant with historic requirements. There might be some historic buildings along Main Street and they'll just have to comply with federal regulations. And I think that is all I had. Does anybody have questions about the project? Yeah? They are. So if you did an intent to participate, the only thing that would be, that would be different is if you're, if you're not in the target area.
Okay, no problem.
You are, okay. And if you're not in the target area, I wanted to, I brought actually some brochures that the H R A does have funding available for, for houses in Swift County. So if you hear of somebody that's not in the target area, there are some funds available in a similar program. So, which is great. Any other questions about the small cities program? I had to kind of go down a list of requirements, so that's why. You, a lot of you, I'm sure, are familiar with this program, which is great. So.
I just wanted to mention and thank our E D A who will be leveraging some funds towards this program, the amount sixty thousand dollars.
Yep.
And for the people who unfortunately don't fall within this target zone, we're going to work with the E D A to see if we can start up a similar program to serve them as well.
I think that would be great. The H R A has also given some leverage funds towards the owner occupied. Appleton project has earmarked some funds to help with the matching dollars for commercial rehab. Veterans Service Officer, they've, they've written a letter of, of offering to help with some leverage funds too. So I think people will be well served.
Thank you and your office for all your work on this.
Yeah. It's, it's one of the best programs out there for our small town. So I'm glad you guys are willing to do it.
Thank you.
Make a motion to close the public hearing on the two thousand twenty small cities development grant application. Time is five forty-two P M.
I second.
Motion's been made and seconded to close public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'll motion that the city council adopt resolution two thousand twenty dash oh seven allowing the city of Appleton to lawfully sponsor the redevelopment project and that the mayor and city administrator are authorized to apply to the Department of Employment and Economic Development for funding on behalf of the city of Appleton.
I second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Make a motion that the city council, that the city of Appleton adapts resolution two thousand twenty dash zero eight identifying slum and frightening conditions.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Resolution two thousand twenty dash zero eight, discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to open the public hearing on amending title three, chapter thirty-one departments, boards, and commissions of the Appleton City Code.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for the boards, commissions of the Appleton City Code. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
A motion to open the public hearing on amending title three, chapter thirty-one departments, boards, and commissions of the Appleton City Code. Time is five forty-four P M.
No, that, what you have for you is the, you had the option of putting it all the way at the bottom of the numbering or putting it before. So I didn't want to do what would be most onerous. I did what was a little simpler, put it in the beginning of it. This is the top of it, the top sheet, if you will.
Can we close out already or?
Unless there's no discussion, we gotta ask them.
Anybody have any discussion about title three, chapter thirty-one?
I need a second, yep, right?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded to close the public hearing. Chapter thirteen departments, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
A motion to approve the amendments to title three, chapter thirty-one departments, boards, and commissions as presented by city staff.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to publish a summary of the ordinance amendments approved by the city council as defined by the state legislature in thirty, three hundred and thirty-one A dot zero one subdivision ten pursuant to Minnesota stat, uh, sorry, can't see. Four one two point one nine one subdivision four provided that a full text of the new ordinances will be available for public inspection at the city offices.
I second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Just to clarify, that's to help us save a little money because these are kind of long. We're publishing them. So we put a summary and we direct the public where they can go and read them if they want to.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'll motion to approve the January fifteenth special meeting and regular meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for the minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Appleton Area Health.
Hello, I'm Lori Andry, CEO at Appleton Area Health. I'm just going to go through the balance scorecard with you that we had sent. Thank you, Andrew. I'm going to skip over the financials first and then Jake will give you a little more detail after I get through the, the balance scorecard. This is something we develop every year for the new fiscal year. So we just finished quarter one of fiscal year twenty. Under service and community, we, we want to develop new behavioral health programs. We actually just received notification from the Department of Health that we received a grant for just shy of forty thousand to bring on a counselor that will provide services to children. So part of that grant is we're going to partner with Appleton Elementary and Locklear High School and provide that person to those schools for some time in their, in their work week. We haven't kind of figured out how, how it's all going to look, but we've let the school know and they're very pleased with it. And that person will also be working in our clinic as well. So we're excited about that. But those are some of the things we kind of had in mind with that. Complete and/or sponsored community wellness initiatives. We had our rebranding and in a community appreciation night in November out at the V F W. That went very well and it's, it's always good to show, show the community how you appreciate, appreciate their support. There's, so we're meeting that goal. Transitions to home program. This is a program where when somebody's discharged from the hospital, one of our staff contacts them and will go out into the home and look at their medications, make sure they're set up correctly or taking them correctly and just try to help prevent them from either having a, being readmitted or having a setback what that could create them having to go into a care center or assisted living or something. Just trying to make sure they're successful at home. Of the five patients that qualified, one of them accepted it. Sometimes people just don't want to accept it. They think they're doing okay. So it's been a little bit of a challenge, but we will keep working and so far we're on target to get to that seventy-five percent by the end of the year. Annual wellness visits are part of the accountable care organization. We joined as part of C M S requirements. This is in the red. We, they haven't given us, they tell us exactly who they're going to track and we won't find that out till April. But we wanted to start tracking and trying to figure it out a little on our own. So it's not where we want it to be, but we actually think we're in really good shape. We, we do a lot of annual wellness. It's very well put in our clinic and it's, and I think we're going to do okay on it. This probably is a little deceiving about not looking so good. I anticipate that's going to be green or blue by the end of the year. Under growth, increased care center case mix. Our case, our baseline was at point eight two. In the care center, we get, our reimbursement is based off of case mix is what it's called. And, and basically what happens sometimes if the case mix is low, we just aren't taking credit for all the services we do and the things we do in our documentation. And that's a way we can kind of make sure that we're paying attention to, you know, making sure that what we're doing is being, we're getting reimbursed or reversed, reimbursed for so that we can have the staff and be able to make sure we're giving the care that our residents need. Lab charges, we want to be at four thousand or greater. We were at three thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine. We're just shy of that goal. Oh, sorry to go back to the case mix. We ended up at point eight seven and our goal is at point eight eight. So almost there as well. Increased number of gastroscopies and colonoscopies. We want to be at thirty-six or greater. We were at thirty-two, a little shy of where we wanted to be. Increased number of surgeries. Our goal is at twenty-five or greater and we were at forty-three. Surgery's been very busy and very positive to see that happening. We, Jake and I typically every quarter, we will analyze our, a different service line just to see where's it at? Are there things we could be doing better? Is it something that people are utilizing? Is it something we need? Or do we just need to do things differently so that people even know that we have it and utilize it? This last month, we did it on skin cancer screening. We, Marshakellis does free skin cancer screenings. And it's been very good. You know, there's certainly revenue that's produced from it. But the bigger thing that we, made us really happy too was there were several skin cancers identified through that free skin cancer screening. And I think at the end of the day, to be able to provide that for people and to be able to identify those early and treat them without it becoming something really severe is important. So been very good with that. Increased clinic bill visits. Our baseline was forty-nine fifty. We wanted to be at sixty-three hundred and that's for the year. We were at sixteen twenty-nine, which we are meeting that goal a little bit ahead of it. And then increased new clinic patients. We want to be at three hundred or greater for the year and we were at a hundred and sixteen for that quarter. So well beyond that goal for the end of the year. Under quality, we measure patient satisfaction. There's different surveys that we do internally. Plus there's things that we have to do through C M S that they require us to do. The inpatient side is one of those. Our goal is to be at eighty percent or greater. We take, there's about fifteen or twenty questions about, you know, were your medications explained? Did the, the nurse get to you as fast as you needed care, is the doctor explaining things, you know, a whole bunch of different questions? We take the total of those and we average them out. And in the inpatient, it was seventy-five percent. And then same day surgery, we were at fifty-four percent. We only take the very top answers. So in the surgery piece, it was the top two answers was a hundred or ninety-two percent of it. But we, we want to just look at that top one and try to figure out how to, how to get all of them to that top one. But some of the issues we have, again, I know I talk about this, is just the space and lack of it sometimes and kind of moving people around a lot. So those are some of the things that go along with that. Under lab and radiology, they met the goal at eighty percent. Outpatient was at eighty-five point seven, exceeding that goal. And under, the clinic under the patient care was ninety-one point seven percent. So overall, really well there. Under quality, again, chronic care management, that's again part of the A C O. And that's about making sure we're contacting patients that have chronic conditions and getting them in for appointments when they need to and those sorts of things. That when we have just started it, it's part of the A C O and we're, you know, it's, you gotta get all the processes in place. So that's not where we want it to be, but we also think we'll get there as well. Care center resident satisfaction, our preliminary results were eighty-six percent. Our goal was to be at eighty-three and last year we were at eighty point two six. So very good job. It's hard to move those numbers that much and I don't know that I've ever seen them bump up that much. So very good. Another thing to add too, we've been notified that we're a five-star care center now. We just found that out about two or three weeks ago. So it just really speaks to the cure that's being provided by our staff. Under care center, there's also a care center family satisfaction and that's not done for a little bit here. So that'll be on the next, the next scorecards. Care Center Quip, this is a program through the state that we're, that we do. It's value-based and we get reimbursed if we're successful in doing it. And the piece we're working on is depressive symptoms. Our baseline is ten point five and our goal is to be at five point six five. Currently, we're at seven point nine five. So we feel pretty confident we'll get to that one as well. And then under Minnesota community measures, those are clinic quality and that will, we will get the final results on that probably March or April. And then under people, reduce employee turnover during the first year. Our goal is to be at less, equal to or less than seven percent. We were at two point two six, a little higher than we want to be, but certainly close to that mark. And then overall employee turnover, we want to be at fourteen percent or less. We're at three point three nine. So we're on target to meet that goal as well. And I'll let Jake kind of speak to the financials.
Evening. Jake Redd, pending CFO of Appletonary Health. Days cash on hand, our goal was sixty and we surpassed that already in the first quarter, which is awesome. We're at sixty-one point six. Seeing that steady growth for the last few quarters of cash. So that's, that's really good. Property margin is two point nine nine percent, just shy of our goal of three point oh nine and our budget amount of three point oh nine. Last quarter, I think I talked about the last one too, our inpatient, our swing bed and our acute stay has been really slow, which does drive a lot of revenue, especially swing bed. One part that's really helping out that, to try to balance out our hospital is, like Lori said, our, and it's in here too, our surgeries are way above where we budgeted and we, kind of where we expected. So that's been really helping. Some other areas, clinic was a little bit slower, but like Apple Ridge, we nodded our budgeted amount there for tenants. We budgeted to be a little more full than we have been, but we're, have our increase going January one that we've talked about before. So that'll hopefully, you know, help the revenue piece and the nursing home is doing, doing really good in revenue. They're pretty on budget for revenue for their actual revenue piece and their expenses are down right now too. So that's really good in helping them out. But overall, below where we want to be a little bit, but kind of staying busy will, will help that. Our A R days were at fifty-five. So that's been trending down and I think fifty-two will be a really good goal and we'll, we'll reach that. But fifty-two is not, fifty-five's not bad. Fifty-five's a good number, but really trying to get that lower down to the fifty-two range. But yeah. Any other questions about financials or balance scorecard at all?
No, but I'd like to commend the hospital leadership as when I sent you guys this report about two weeks ago. They've tried to take on an intangible from a management perspective. It's very difficult to change attitudes from economic sustainability to economic growth. And you have to be really brave to take that on, especially when you have some scrutiny happening. So keep going, guys.
Thank you.
Any changes to the agenda? Do we have anybody with public, anybody with public comments? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to whole business. After an old business, we'll move on to new business.
The staff would like to recommend that a full-time liquor store clerk, the role be created. We work with Ann to see how we can, we nagle a little bit of the numbers down. And she has helped the staff to identify an issue that was happening with the time clock.
and she has helped the staff to identify an issue that was happening with the time clock, which will help us save some of those hours that we found to be disparate. With that effort, I think that, that department should be trusted to manage a full-time employee and they desperately need it because sometimes when she's away, she doesn't have enough people, enough literally bodies to fill the hours required.
After talking with Ann in the office, I agree and motion to establish the role of full-time liquor store clerk at the Appleton Municipal Liquor Store.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All motion to approve the Appleton Firefighters Relief Association Appointment of Officers for twenty-twenty.
I second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Hazard mitigation. We have our friend here.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Bill McGary of the Swift County Emergency Management. What you have, you should have in front of you, I believe, the resolution adopting the hazard mitigation plan. It is a county plan that each municipal jurisdiction needs to approve also to qualify for FEMA reimbursement in times of disaster. When anything that we have bad, I get a call from the sheriff or whoever and our city managers, that we need help. When I make the phone call up the ladder, the very first question I get is have, has your county and your jurisdictions approved the hazard mitigation plan? I say yes, and then they come. If you don't have that resolution adopted and approved, they will not come. They expect you to take a little ownership and, and take care of your residents by, you know, being aware of the plan. You don't have to, you don't have to read the plan. If you want to, it's online. It's five hundred and twelve pages.
Short read.
Yeah, it's on the RDC's website and Swift County website under emergency management. We have to, we update this plan every five years. That's a requirement of FEMA. So with that, that's, and the RDC does that for us. They write a grant for it. They do all the legwork. I don't do it. I help them organize. We, we have a meeting in each city up and down the, through the county. The townships are covered by the county's adoption of the plan. The jurisdictions are made to adopt their own resolution. So what you have in front of you is a resolution. You need to adopt that and then I have a sign sheet that FEMA loves to see, signatures that you actually heard me and saw the resolution and adopted it. So I'll give you this to sign, pass around, and here's some business cards for me, so you can call me anytime, day or night, and I'll come. So that's, that's all I have unless you have any questions of me.
Just to be clear, right, if the, if the city had not participated in the planning process, they wouldn't be able to sign.
You wouldn't be able to ask for help.
Correct. Thank you.
Basically that simple.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You bet.
All motion that the city council adopt Resolution twenty-twenty dash oh-nine, the Swift County All Hazard Mitigation Plan, which allows for the city of Appleton, having duly participated in the planning process, to be eligible to receive FEMA Hazard Mitigation Assistant Grants as established under the Disaster Mitigation Act of two thousand.
I second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
One more thing, if you give that to Kirk at the RDC, that signed statement, then he'll extend it into FEMA.
Okay, perfect.
So I don't need to take it home and then lose it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
You bet.
Airport Grant Resolution. So this is the grant coming Minnesota Department of Transportation for airports. We're very lucky to receive that grant ten, ten ninety split and this is the resolution adopting that grant.
Is that the grant still up to five percent?
Yes.
All motion that the city council adopt Resolution twenty-twenty dash ten, authorizing the mayor and city administrator to execute Minnesota Department of Transportation Grant Agreement Number one zero three six zero nine one for airport improvement excluding land acquisition for state project number A seven six oh two dash sixteen at, at the Appleton Airport.
I second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Northland Securities Letter of Engagement, GEO Health Facilities Bond.
I have been looking to find a way to try to save pennies here and there and in looking I found a bond that's callable and we can lower that rate if we finish essentially in terms of refinancing it. The market is currently in a trough. Our, the rates are really low and we can save between three and four hundred dollars over the life of this bond, about twenty thousand dollars less a month in liabilities for a hospital who really needs that relief.
It's not something I said.
No. Um, he's being transferred to St. Cloud, so I won't be there.
We're still under a quorum, so we're good.
All right, all motion to allow the city administrator to sign the engagement letter with Northland Securities to serve as underwriter for the issuance of general obligation refunding bonds to refinance the GEO Health Facilities Bond of two thousand and four.
I second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Economic Development Benefits and Responsibilities Business Ownership Policy.
Motion, go ahead.
I would like to chat about this because I, I want the city council to be really aware of this. The, the staff is proposing this policy so that our most responsible business owners are able to enjoy the, the economic development benefits that are afforded through municipalities such as this one. Those benefits are development agreements, which could include taxing incremental finance districts or just taxing incremental finance arrangements, tax abatements and business subsidies. We wanna make sure that if we're putting the voters and constituents' trust in a firm, that they are the most responsible firm and this is asking that all their bills, at the very least, be paid and up to date prior to be, being considered for any of those benefits.
Motion to approve the economic development benefits for responsible business owners policy.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Utilities bills, fees, charges, penalties, waivers, limitations, policies.
The staff is proposing a bill, penalty, whatever is outstanding owed to the city limitation so that a habitual system of going to the city council for relief is not established. It doesn't limit the city council authority in any way. All it does is say, if the city council gives you disrelief in one year, please do not seek out relief again in the same year.
All motion to approve the utility bills, fees, charges, and penalties waiver limitations policy.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Western Prairie Farm Machinery Collectors Raffle.
Motion to approve the Western Prairie Farm Machinery Collectors to host a raffle on Tuesday, April fourteenth, twenty twenty at the Appleton VFW pursuant of the application guidelines of the Minnesota Gambling Control Board as prescribed Minnesota Statute three four nine point one six six.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Appointment city administrator to Pioneer Land Library Systems Board.
All motion to prove that the city administrator represent the city of Appleton on the Pioneer Land Library System Board.
I second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Miller Trust Memorial Street Signed on Dates.
We would like to thank Miller Trust. They have two dates sent us forty thousand one hundred and six dollars fifty-nine cents as of December twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen. As you can tell, it's kind of chilly and frozen outside. As soon as it thaws out a little bit, my intention is to see what I can leverage, see what kind of grants there are available. I know that where I was from, I was able to get a bunch of LED signs for that community and so I'm gonna see what Minnesota has, beg and plead for it and leverage these funds for that, so.
LED signs on the, like.
Yeah, like the street will be in LEDs since it's so dark out there sometimes and deer come to my house.
I hadn't mentioned this before at a meeting, but I would like to mention it again that if we get new street signs, as far as the ones that name the streets, I think we should get full sets of them nationally, put them on the internet. I mean, cause there's family members and people that would probably buy a set of signs or buy the signs because their family members were in the service. So you could set a whole set, if you gotta set up every street sign in Appleton in a group, you know, you buy that package. I mean, maybe you'll get two, three thousand dollars or a thousand dollars for that group of signs rather than just scrap them. And then as you go down and we start running out of street lines, people can actually just possibly buy the ones just for their family or, I mean, I think we could turn it into a money thing if we advertise it right and get it out to the community members that know they're people that were in the war. I think it'd be a good avenue. And possibly the VFW might buy a set to have at the VFW. Maybe they'll pay two thousand dollars to have a full set to put in like the VFW or.
Which would also help set.
Yeah, like, you know, I, I really think it would be a way to possibly help, you know, create some money for us.
At the opera, you would like sponsor a seat. Maybe we could sponsor a sign.
Yep.
Yeah.
So we've got a motion in the second or?
That didn't require.
That's just an update.
Yep. Do we need to do the staff report so they have, people don't have to.
Yeah, we can do the staff report.
Or if we do the staff report, then we're gonna go into closed session, so then you guys will have to hang your own if you don't.
So I'll start with our general fund balances. Our unrestricted funds are one million six hundred and eight dollars, eight hundred and seventy-two dollars and eighty-one cents. Our restricted funds are nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars for a total of two point five million dollars in our general fund. In terms of transaction history, we have had three hundred and ninety-four thousand seven hundred and forty-four point twenty-two checkbook transactions. Of those transactions, some of them were above the five thousand dollar purchasing policy due to the fact that they were contractual and some of them were payroll deduction related, which is allowable. In terms of accounts payable transactions, we've had a hundred and thirty-four invoices in the month of January alone, a dollar rally of two hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars thirty-one cents. The difference there is that the first figure included motor vehicle transactions, which we have to pay for our checkbook too, so a difference of about seventy thousand dollars. That's basically it for now.
Staff report, uh, we're going to close session now.
Motion to enter into closed session pursuant to Minnesota Statute thirteen D point zero five subdivision three B two dash three to discuss the protected real estate property appraisal as defined by Minnesota Statute thirteen point four four subdivision three A B for parcel two two dash zero four eight four dash zero zero zero.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. We're going to close session. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.